Thank you for joining. This is Live with Miami's Community News and I'm Michael Ball. Our very, very special guest is the Honorable Chairman of Miami-Dade County Commission, Anthony Murabakis. Thank you for coming on, Chairman.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me, Mike, and thank you for that introduction. I would just say, Anthony, just your neighbor.
Okay, Anthony, you got this going on, man. Good job. All right. Does your wife help you with this?
What is this?
This whole look, all right?
Well, let me-
You still have black hair, so congratulations on that.
Let me set the record straight. Let me, if we're gonna get started with that, and for the record, for the viewers, this was not planned, all right? Thank you for this, this side ball or curve ball that you threw at me. Uh, but for the record, this is all natural. I don't dye my hair. I don't have implant, none of that.
Heard it here first, folks.
This is, you're hearing it here first. I'm setting the record straight. This is my actual hair. So, so no implants, no dye, no anything. This is, this is what it is. Thank you.
So here we are in August 2025. The biggest stinks are going on as far as the budget. Everybody's sort of concerned about that. I noticed that there's some things you want to talk about, but before, before we get to that, I like to talk about the waste-to-energy plant, all right, that burnt down in 2023 in Doral. Everybody's been kicking this ball around for several years.
Yes.
Is the, is the commission any closer to deciding on a location?
Absolutely, we are. And, and that was my number one thing when I got elected chair by my colleagues. So at the end of last year of 2024, uh, amongst the commissioners, my colleagues, uh, selected me to be their chairman for the next two years. Uh, that is the, the, the term that a chairman serves in Miami-Dade County, uh, commission. And my very first day as chair, in fact, within minutes of being selected chairs with my, by my colleagues, uh, within my introduction and my thank you to my colleagues, I, I said out and I said, my number one priority is going to be to find a final solution, long-term solution, for our solid waste situation here in Miami-Dade County as a result of our plant burning down in 2023 over two years ago. Uh, so, and that's exactly what I've done. This is something that we've been kicking the can down the road for way too long. And so I set timelines. I said, within six months, we've gotta come back with proposals. We've gotta come back with, with the community that's interested, the private sector that's interested in doing business with, with the, partnering with the county to solve this problem, to come back, tell us that they have an interest, and see who's the better option to go with. And that just happened. That came back and a month, and last month on the commission, the commission studied it. We looked at it and we sent it back to the mayor and said, hey, we, you now have about 90 days to work with the leaders, with the top companies out of the, there was like 30 some odd companies that submitted interest. Uh, and so now within 90 days, they're coming back to us with a more concrete proposal, with numbers, with figures, with locations, so that we can, hopefully, this commission and this body can make a final decision for a long-term solution. One thing that's important that's often overlooked is we have implemented a short-term solution. And a short-term solution is not what I think we need, uh, but it's certainly plugging the hole. And the short-term solution is a 10-year solution. It's not a 12-month or 24-month. It is a 10-year solution, which is landfilling. We have a get, we have a set contract guaranteed 10-year solution for landfilling for all of our solid waste here in Miami-Dade County, uh, that is being mostly hauled away from Dade County and, and landfilled. So we have a short-term solution in place and we're, we're, we're gonna, hopefully, we will have a long-term solution in the next 92 to 120 days.
That's wonderful, because when that gets done, people's temperature will, it'll go back down and people won't get, be so agitated.
I think that's the number one, outside of the budget that I'm sure we'll discuss today, that is the number one issue that this county is facing today. It's that, that waste-to-energy facility, uh, or what the solution will be for solid waste long-term.
Let's talk a little bit about the recycling program. And this is my, what I understand. You have the blue cart. People put the things they think are recyclable into that blue cart. Once every two weeks, vendor comes out, picks up the stuff. Um, the newest thing is you can put pizza boxes in there if they're lightly soiled. I'm not sure what that quite means, but it's pretty big. And the, the, depending on what figures you want to believe, there's somewhere between 40 and 70% contamination, which means that half the stuff doesn't get contaminated, I mean, doesn't get recycled. And the, uh, county has enforcement. They go out and they look into the cans and those give you citation three, up to three times after that, they'll give you a ticket. It's a volunteer program.
Correct.
And I don't get it, all right? You know, that's beating people over the head. And if I got a ticket for a volunteer program, guess what? I'm not doing it, all right?
Correct.
And I, and when I spoke to the mayor the other day, I, I, and I said, what I have not seen is moving this stuff back into, into people's faces as far as needed recycle, all right? Before it was like the hip thing to do. Now it's like, it's, it, it's become mainstream, but it's out of sight now. So what can the county do so that we are more acutely aware of what we should do to help the environment?
Michael, you're entirely, entirely right. And the thing is, exactly what you said, there's, there's a large percentage of recycled material today that we recycle, that I, in my household, put into the green, into the blue tank, uh, that ultimately does not go to recycling because it's contaminated. I think it starts at education. I think we need to educate our community, starting in our schools, right? You gotta start young, educating on what is recyclable, what's not, because we're not doing a good enough job. And you're right, there was a timeline, and I don't know how many years back that was now, but there was a time, uh, where I remember that it was almost cool to recycle.
Yes.
Right? It was, it was a trend. It was, it was the thing. But that has faded away. It's, it's in people, it's, it's, it's back of mind now. It's not, uh, front and center, and we need to make that front and center. Uh, and, and that, and that's a combination of our total waste solutions for Miami-Dade County. It's, recycling is part of that. But there, there's a lot more to it. There's composting, uh, and then there's obviously whether we do waste-to-energy, which I think is an important aspect of it, but there's, there's a lot of aspects to solving the 100% of our, of our waste that we can, that we produce here in Miami-Dade County.
I got so frustrated talking with Jean Marie Matthews, lovely lady. We have a great show. We do it. She's a recycling manager for the county. My wife and I went out and bought a composter for the house. Just so you know, folks, it's silent. It never smells. We put our stuff in, everything but steak bones, food, go in there. And in a couple of days a week, it's all dehydrated. And we just take it out and we empty it. And we put it on our plants. So it's really a very effective way to get, to do your part within your house. But there is hope. My 10-year-old grandson is on the water and he's in his kayak and he sees the manatees and he comes up, he's holding a plastic bag. He says, Grandpa, look, I found some, some trash in the water. That's what we need. As you're saying, it's gotta start early enough, so there's many, many years of people, you know, being aware of that.
Education.
All right, so recycling, the trash. Let's talk about, um, services that the county can offer to people that are autistic or on the spectrum. Uh, we hear figures of one to 30, one out of 30 or 35 kids are autistic, but the real figure is one out of seven have, uh, similar disorders. What can the county do so that services are available or at least directed so young moms and dads have a direction to go and that it's, so they know that there's help?
So again, similar to what we just discussed on solid ways, I think education is important because the county has a lot of programs. The county has a lot of, of opportunities and leadership to guide families and parents as to where to go for all sorts of services. And we have a one-stop shop that directs you, hey, go here for your, your parking permit. Go here for a window sticker to, to, to advise firefighters and police if they come into your home for an emergency, that there's someone with special needs in the home. Uh, we have a lot of different services that we offer today. The, the problem is, I'm not sure that the entire community is aware of this. I'm not sure they're aware that they can contact Miami-Dade County and be guided in the right direction, steered in the right direction, uh, in order to find these services. That's internally. We partnered with the sheriff's office, uh, we've partnered with the tax collector on a lot of the, uh, a lot of these, uh, programs. But separate from internal programs that we have between our county, our, our local government and our constitutional officers, we've also partnered with a lot of nonprofits that offer a ton of services. We've got the WOW Center. Uh, we, we have Casa Familia, which I'm proud that both of them, uh, um, lie within District 10, within the district I represent. So we have a lot of good organizations, uh, that service a special needs population, whether it's children or adults, uh, and, and we have the programs both in-house and with our private partners. Uh, but I don't know that the community is fully aware of it and understand that they can come to us and we can steer them in the right direction.
I understand there's two commis, county commissions that have children on the spectrum.
Yes, and they're, they're public about it, so we can definitely speak about that.
It's two out of 13. This stuff is everywhere. We, we now have shows, um, Victor Antone says, does a show, and he wears hats, says autistic dad. I met him at one of our meetings here that we happen to be talking about autism. So he has an eight-year-old. He brings in, that's autistic. He brings in moms and dads that have autistic children, including one lady who does the show, uh, public show, Candy Sparks, who had two 17-month-old twins. And in two weeks, they've become non-verbal.
Wow.
Big job, big family, big this. All of a sudden, she said, my only job in life is to get them to be able to become adults. So when we look how prevalent it is, I, and when I heard, um, Commissioner Regalotto go, they deserve a seat at the table. So Grant and I made that admission to, to have that conversation, so they'll, so they'll get a chance. I do want to share a story about, a while back, a doctor comes in, he says, my son is autistic, graduated from college, and this, Rainer, would you give him an internship? My only experience was with Steve Bateman, whose son is autistic. And I'd seen Austin, when he was a little baby, rocking back and forth, screaming, Austin, change your diaper, change your diaper. That's going through my head when the father's asking me to do this internship for his son. And I got really sort of mixed inside. And then he shows me a, a, starts to show me a video of what his son did. And I said to myself, you can't look at it, because it's not whether the video is gonna, it's whether you can find a place for him.
Yeah.
I said, okay, Dad. I said, you're saving lives. We're gonna, we're gonna give you some, three hours a day, four days. The end of the first day, we hired him. He's been here, in October will be three years.
Wow, I love that.
And so it's when you can give people a chance that, that you can see, there's a whole bunch of people that, that, one, you can change their lives, all right? And two, when the parents called me crying and saying, thank you so much, I said, well, I want to thank you for introducing me to him, because it's changed our whole operation here. Before we used to say his name and that, you know, the autistic. Now, that's not, that's not part of the conversation anymore. Really, it's a tribute to him, the support that he does, and for how comfortably he feels here. I know there are hundreds and perhaps thousands of companies that, that could open their heart. Find one that works, all right? So anyway, so I hope that you're able to do that.
Michael, I, I share that sentiment and I'm a walking advocate for, to, to share here today on the program, anyone that is an employer and can employ someone with special needs, uh, that can work, do it. Um, I, I, I don't talk about it enough, uh, for whatever reason, although that, he wants me to talk about it, but I, in my, in my office, I've also hired someone a couple of years back, and it is the best thing that we've done in the office. I come in as stressed as can be one day, uh, when he's in the office and he works every week, and I can be as stressed as, as, as ever, and he comes and greets me and we have a conversation, and it just distracts me if even just for a few minutes. I need it in my life. I've become, uh, 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 ju, I've adjusted to it, but I've, I've become wanting, I want it. I, I want that distraction if even for a few minutes. Um, and, and our entire office loves it, so.
There's no saying, if it's not working, I'll just pause for a moment. Let's talk about the budget. Been plenty of stories about the county's $420 million over deficit, and this is big stakes, all right? Just to set the record straight, the, the, the mayor and its offices prepares a budget, presents it to the commissioners.
That is correct.
And then the commission then, uh, asks for changes or whatever's gonna happen. So right now, all the news is about how come the administration wound up in this position? So the budget has to be approved, it's gonna be approved in a couple of weeks, whatever budget it is.
September.
And so in six weeks, it's gonna be a done deal.
Yes.
Let's talk, what do you want to happen to this budget so the things that are necessary can get done?
So a few things, Michael, and this is, this is something that I don't think any of my colleagues, including myself, signed up for, uh, this situation that we're facing in this fiscal year that we're approaching. So what you explained is perfect. The mayor proposes a budget. She looks at the finances with her finance team. She redoes the budget every year, proposes it to the commission, and then we'll review it, uh, argue it and dissect it, and then we, we, we approve a final product, right? For the first time, as far as I know, and, and, and historically, I've called, so the month of August, which we're in now, is what the county usually considers an off month. We don't meet. We don't have Board of County Commissioners meetings. I, I called a Committee of the Whole for August 20th, uh, which is considered a workshop, specifically, uh, to dissect and surgically look at our budget, because we are facing a large deficit of over $400 million. That number is very real. In fact, it might be conservative, uh, because when we, when we talk about some of the, uh, numbers of the constitutional officers, and this isn't to, to blame anyone, because there, some, some are very warranted and very, uh, acceptable in what, in what they're asking for, but we, we're being conservative in that $400 million deficit budget that the mayor, uh, presented. So that has to be looked at, because money just doesn't grow on trees, different than people's beliefs. It doesn't.
For clarity, on the constitutional offices, talking about the newly-elected sheriff, tax collector, tax appraiser, continuation of the clerk's office, and I think there's another one in there.
Correct, but I want to clarify, this deficit is not a result of the constitutional officers. When I bring them up, I bring them up because in the $400 million deficit that has been outlined, that's not even counting a portion, an additional amount, that some of the constitutional officers have, uh, outlined in their proposed budget that comes from us, essentially. That's why I bring them up, but this deficit isn't, in my opinion, is not a direct result. Can, does it affect it some? Sure. It certainly adds to it. It's not a direct result of it, though.
People have asked me, it's a $12 billion a year company. How could they have been so far off? Percentage-wise, it's a small one, but when the public sees $400 million, it seems like it's gigantic. But it's, it's, so it's 400 million out of 12 and a half. How did they miss it?
Well, I think, look, I think a lot of what you're seeing, and that's all in this number, right? So while it's a very real number, it's, it, it was almost expected. Some things were not something we could anticipate, but others was. What do I mean by that? There was a lot of money that flowed in, uh, from the federal government during COVID, what we called ARPA money. That was really one-time money. We knew we weren't going to receive that in a residual, on a residual or recurring basis. Uh, but some folks in the community, I don't want to say became dependent on it, but thought that it wouldn't run out. And here we are, COVID's behind us now. It's in the rearview for the most part. And certainly, the federal money dried up. It's no longer here. So we need, we need to plug that hole. And for example, in CBOs alone, what we call nonprofits, which are great partners of the community and do, of the county, and do great work in our community, that was almost $49 million that the county puts into nonprofits every year. In the mayor's proposed budget, that's zeroed out.
So, uh, just for clarity, these were not ongoing grants every year that they had to reapply?
No, some were.
Some were.
Some, some have been here for years, uh, but there's a, there's a, there's a portion of that that was one-time funding from the federal government. And I think those people should have known, um, and I understand that they were told at the time, I wasn't there, uh, that that was one-time funding. So that, it should be to no surprise. Now, even if they knew it or not, Mike, it doesn't matter. They're, they're still going to come back and ask and say they need it and that what the services that they're providing are great, which I agree, and, and most of them are great services. Uh, but unfortunately, we do need to make very tough decisions. I, I would not want to be in any of our shoes in the commission, although I am, uh, but certainly not in the mayor's shoes, because she, she had a very tough job to do in presenting this budget. I, she's told me before, and I believe her when she says that she has lost sleep over this, uh, years, uh, this coming year's, uh, proposed budget, so. But that's what we're discussing right now. We've got a lot to discuss. Um, one of the things that I just, uh, presented to the mayor is I've been in week-long conversations with our tax collector. So he, our tax collector collects all the money for the county, but he keeps 2% uh, and, and to operate. That's how they, that's, that's part of how he operates amongst fees that they charge as well, for like licenses and registrations, et cetera, et cetera. But some of those, that 2% that he keeps from the total collection, he, he uses a portion of it, a, a good amount of it, and then the remainder, he would give back to the county in the, in the, the next year, you know, so a year later. Over weeks of negotiations with him, he's agreed, uh, to upfront some of that money, uh, in excess of 30 some odd million dollars, I think actually over, over $40 million. That is nowhere near $400 million deficit, but it, but little by little, we're trying to plug the hole without jeopardizing services, and that is our goal.
So why, it, it seems to be there, a lot of municipalities in the county is proud to be able to say, gee, we cut the tax rate. People in, that I know, the people that live like I do, say, why didn't, why did they cut it at all? Because maybe it would have been, we wouldn't have had this deficit. So what's the thinking, other than to say, gee, we cut it? And, and to cut it rather than leave it the same, because the last two years, the tax rate was cut, right?
So it, it, so we, we've cut it before, and this year, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, for this coming proposed budget, the commission voted to keep the millage, uh, flat.
Okay.
We did not approve a, uh, an increase in the millage, um, but it, so it'll, it'll remain flat. In past years, we've reduced it 2% or 3% or 2%, but given the deficit, it was, it was not reasonable to reduce it without doing a deep dive. We can still reduce it, and that's what this, the August 20th meeting is about.
So, um, so let's talk about P for the 25 million or 45 million or 300, whatever the figure is.
Some odd million.
So I noticed that, uh, Commissioner McGee says, forget them, all right? Take care of our charities in particular. I look forward to having a conversation with them. Isn't it too late to do that?
Michael, it's never late, right? Ah, I mean, I guess some, at some point it will be, but here's, here's the thing with that. And I've, I myself has, have mixed feelings about that. I agree. I agree with, with what Commissioner McGee is saying, or the vice chair. I agree with, uh, what some of my other colleagues that have been against this from the, from the beginning are saying, but I also agree. So I agree that that money could have better maybe been spent on plugging the hole on some of the other stuff that we're experiencing deficits on right now. But the reality is, is that this commission and this mayor inherited this. This is, this is, this FIFA World Cup is something that the county applied for years back. Not during this mayor's tenure, not during my tenure, definitely as, as, as chairman or commissioner even. And so the county applied, but it doesn't matter who it was. What matters is that the county as a whole was the one that applied for it. We wanted it. We asked for it. We got it. Now we've gotta support it, right? It's, it's kind of the mentality. Do we need to, the, was, was the application said as to how much the county portion had to be? I don't believe that to be the case. I know that there was a county portion, and they're also raising private dollars to, to make this happen as well. There's a whole committee that's doing this. Um, which probably be a good idea to have someone from the, from, from that committee on, on the show as well, uh, to talk about that. That merits its own conversation, I believe. So yes, when we're looking at a 400-plus million dollar deficit in our budget, yes, it raises the question if we should claw back some of that money. But we can't forget that the county asked for this.
This is a, this is marketing, which returns stuff. We look at the Super Bowl, when the Super Bowl is down here, and thus, it's like, this is a gin, gigantic deal. Plenty of publicity when we have the Grand Prix races or whatever those things are that are going on.
And there's a return on our money, by the way.
Yes, and that's, that's the point of all this, which, it's gonna come back, all right? And we see what in Miami Gardens with the races that they're going on there. That was a big deal. Everybody fought it at the beginning, so don't, but they're, they're pretty happy because people benefited, you know, from that. So there certainly is a big benefit from that. So I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but you guys are gonna have that conversation, I guess, in a couple of weeks. So I see you have some notes here. Let's talk about things that are important. Your, your turn.
No, no, I, 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 I don't listen. I think we've covered a lot of it. To, to me, right now, there's, there's a few things that are top of mind, and it's solid waste we covered. Our, our budget deficit, which we're going to be diving in deeper on August 20th. Um, and then something I, I guess that comes to mind, because I'm very excited about it, and I think it's going to be great for our entire community, uh, not just our private sector partners, but every resident, uh, because it ultimately affects our pocket, and we all pay property taxes, right? Those of us that are homeowners. So I, I recently created, uh, my colleagues supported, uh, what we call the Strip Committee. And it's, it's a strip bureaucracy and inefficiencies from our procurement process, uh, in the county. And, and why is that important? That is important because today, we procure hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, worth of projects, goods and services, uh, and, and all sorts of things that the county has to procure. Today, for any given procurement, and there's different processes for different styles, uh, but the average procurement takes well over 18 months, from the date that we put it out to the day that we award a contract. And that could be, Michael, to purchase paper clips, or that can be to enhance and renovate our airport. It can be as small as paper clips or as large as an entire new, new terminal at, at the airport, right, or at the seaport. So it's a huge range of procurement. But over those 18 months, what do you think happens to a procurement that we put out? We get bids from, we take, for the airport, to build a new terminal, I'm just using, this is an example, and it takes 18 months to award. And by the time that we award it, not to mention that technology might change, but putting that aside, the industry market rate changes. So now we're spending more on ta, of taxpayer dollars, because the contractors are gonna come back to us and say, well, the price I gave you was for 18 months ago, but materials have gone up, labor cost has gone up, insurance has gone up. We cannot fo, we can't build it for you for the same price. Now it's gonna cost you X times more. Well, what's, who does that affect? Don't, don't say it's the county. It's all of us that are paying our property taxes. We are the county. All of us are the county. It's not Anthony Rodriguez. It's not the mayor, Danilo Vincava, or any of my colleagues in the commission. It's all of us. We're just elected by the rest of the community to, to guide it and to, and to lead it. But it, we're all paying into the same pot. So this, this task force that, that, uh, that I spearheaded and, and my colleagues fully supported, uh, hopefully will, will clean up and cut that bureaucracy and that red tape to shorten that length, which ultimately will be financial savings, uh, for all of the residents here in Miami-Dade County, and expedite projects.
Let's talk about, a little bit about, and by the way, I had an experience yesterday. Our security camera guy, he says, listen, you ordered this stuff, that solar battery stuff. It just went up, you one item went, almost doubled, because of the stuff. And it's like, oh my goodness. So I already know what the rest of it's gonna look like. Let's talk about agriculture, protecting agricultural property. We both happen to live where it's on agriculture, but let's talk about down south to where these property owners say, listen, I have an opportunity to sell my farm down here for 25 times more than I paid for it 10 years ago. And then the county commission approves a huge apartment buildings, which creates a whole, whole bunch of stuff. So what, what can we do to protect our agricultural property? Because we can see that it's shrinking, all right? Put aside the traffic, put aside the jobs, but just as far as protecting the property. And understanding, property owners have rights, and the neighbors have opinions. So what, what can we do?
Yeah, look, I, I think I've been very vocal on the commission, and, and my voting record will, will show. I, I've always been very friendly, uh, to agriculture. I mean, I live in an agriculture community myself. Um, and I, we, I joke on the commission with my colleagues that I'm the only one that actually lives, actually lives in an agriculture, uh, neighborhood. And, and they all get mad at me, right? Because we, 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 we fight, we argue about, friendly argument about who, who loves agriculture more. Uh, but, but the reality is, is look, let's, let's step away from just that one topic. There's, there's more to it. And this is the part that really bothers me in general, is essentially, it's NIMBYism, at, at its best, right? Is, because nobody wants development in their neighborhood. Remove agriculture for a second. I think agriculture must be protected. Removing that for a second. No one wants development in their neighborhood. So where do you build development? Because we have, the demand is there. We have to do it. We have to build. It's, it's part of our, our infrastructure. Uh, in fact, it's going to help neighborhoods, because we've got to also build transport, you know, transportation corridors, transit corridors. So if the, the city, the city has no more land, serenaires don't want to go up vertical, uh, and everybody's saying, not in my backyard, not in my backyard. There's only certain parts of the county that still have land. Now, that doesn't mean that we go in and infringe on ag land, but we've gotta start seeing, okay, where does it make sense? And I think that's what this body has been doing thus far. Some items have been more controversial than others, uh, but nonetheless, we're, we're trying to be very selective with where we approve development and not. Uh, and mind you, Michael, I'll admit, and I'll be very honest, this is even an argument in my home. My wife tells me all the time. She says, stop approving development. I said, trust me, we're not approving as much development as come in front of us. We're denying a lot of it, but we've gotta do smart development, because it, it's going to come. So my theory is, let's drive the, let's drive the way the neighborhood looks, right? If it's an ag community, if it's an ag neighborhood, an ag land, and there is, and, and they have the right to build by right, and they can build X, 100 units, I'm just gonna throw a number, and we can have a seat at the table with the developer that by right can build 100 units, and we can negotiate with that developer and say, hey, we only want you to build 60 units, not 100. And we need it to be farm-style. And we need it to be X square footage of land per parcel. We don't want it cookie cutter. We don't want a condo. We, it needs to be a townhome or a single-family home. If, if we can drive and have a seat at the table, I think that's important, because a lot of these lands, whether they're being agged today or not, which a lot of them are not, by the way, they're just abandoned land that are being built now, they have, the, the owners have the right to build. And that is a, a, a piece of information that a lot of the community does not, is not told on, is not told. They have the right to build. We, as commissioners, often have a seat at the table, because they still need us for certain approvals, and that's when we have a say and say, hey, yes, I understand you have a right to build. And that's when we have a say and say, hey, yes, I understand you have a right to build all of these units, but we really. Only want you to build a little bit of these units.
And and for the neighbors and we have neighbors here at the at the office, I get it, all right? Which is the the property rights of the of the person by right, they can do things. I bet I'm on both sides of this. We have commercial property here. We have neighbors that are right behind us. God bless them, all right? In horse country, I'm on the other side, which is I'm like the neighbors that are here. But again, so when people go, the land that's down south, if it's by right, that means they can go do it. The commission, what I'm hearing is. Uh, when appropriate, you say, listen, can we change this around a little bit? So there won't be as much problem to try to keep everybody happy. So when we when we build those apartments down south, it creates homes, and hopefully they can be local businesses. The biggest issues that I hear is, where are the people gonna park? And what roads are they gonna take? Tell us about how you balance.
So so, Michael, that's that's the, one of the biggest issues. Obviously, for me, one of the most important issues is the agriculture aspect, right? But a a parallel to that is the the traffic, not just the parking. So parking, we can demand that they build enough parking for the amount of residential units that they're doing. That is, that has a solution within the approval process. It's more of the traffic, right? Here's the thing, like, we just approved the set, uh, down south, and I don't, I'm sure you're familiar with it. We just approved the set of, uh, several different, uh. Areas of development down south, and here's, here's the reason why I believe the commission passed. And and ultimately approved it. A is it's within the inside, uh, UDB boundary. So it's not outside the UDB. It's not in wetlands. It's it's by right, they can build there, and there's neighbors in that community. It's not like it's a all agriculture around there. But the key to to what you just asked is, they're within the RTZ zone. They're within a mile, a half mile, a mile and a half of rapid transit, and that's what we're looking at. And that's what this county wanted, by the way. That's what they voted for. That's what this county, that's the direction that we're going as a county. If it's not what we want, then we need to switch direction. We need to go in another direction. But as of right now, the direction of this county is build density around rapid transit zones. So that we can educate our community and our, and especially our young community that are first time home buyers to start using public transportation. Start using buses, start using the metro, and that's the idea behind RTZ, Rapid Transit Zones. Is building density where those areas exist.
The corner of Sunset driving US one, where there's metro station, there's two buildings I, that is student housing. What a pleasure it is to see these students walking on the streets fifteen years ago. If you didn't have a gun with you, you better watch out, all right? And we see the young moms, the dads with the strollers and and the dogs and stuff. What a difference that has made because they're living there, all right? And that means they they they're right there. They go on the metro rail or they walk across the streets of South Miami. Big, big difference, so. And if people haven't seen that, they should take a look at it. And we look at the, uh, old Cutler Bridge Mall, all right? That's gonna be a true town center by the time that gets done there.
It'll be great.
Oh, my goodness, all right? We're gonna have a little visitor here. Grant Miller here.
Stop, no way. Grant Miller here or what?
Can we get him a microphone?
This is just like, this was unexpected.
Well, I I was on Kiva Scan, I get a note. That you're in town.
So you jumped in your helicopter and came over here.
Right, we we have a budget for that.
Not taxpayer dollars.
No, 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 no.
Can we check that microphone, make sure?
Are we all good? We're good.
And let's put on the.
What do we need to talk about?
Well, we've covered everything, almost.
We covered autism, we covered, oh, um, transportation, I think some housing. We need to cover, what was the other one? The, oh, septic tanks.
But here's some more interesting, here's some interesting.
That that will save for Commissioner Regalado.
That the challenge, not as a chairman, but as you and Rob Gonzalez and your district, there's no cities.
Hundred percent UMSA, unincorporated Dade County.
So it's right. You're you are UMSA. You know, there's a problem, you know, as we know, Senator Soto, you know, he he pounded pavement. That's what you guys are doing. There's no city, hey, if you're covering Cora Gable, say, call your city commissioner. It's you.
The bug stops stops with us, uh, and and that's my my constant, um, I don't wanna say fight, but my constant, uh. Debate, uh, when discussing even this this new proposed budget, right? I mean, in in the earlier versions, and and I say this in a very positive way, not not i- in in a bashing way at all, because. I I work very well with our mayor. Uh, she is, uh, very respectful of of my opinion. Uh, and often takes my opinion. Uh, I I will not toot my own horn, but I always, when I, when I. Push back on something that she proposes, I also propose a solution to that, to my pushback, right? I don't just ask, ask for stuff. Uh, but like, for example, because of the budget, I understand, you know, we need to find cuts, and one of the cuts was originally proposed was to reduce. The amount of cuts of of, uh, lawn, of grass cuts in our in our county. And that affects us the most, UMSA, District eleven and District ten, Rob Gonzalez and myself. Because we don't have cities that can pick up the slack and come and cut the medians and cut the grass. So just last week, I was driving, you know, two weeks ago, I was driving and I, and I called my team and I'm like, hey, we need to get. Whether it's the county or whether it's the state out here and cut the grass, the grass was like up to my chest. It's rainy season.
Yeah, it's a challenge. There's there's two other commissioners that have, you know, Cohen Higgins and, um, Keone has some.
They do.
But your district's more interesting because you you have a lot of blue collar. You and Rob have blue collar people.
All the established, established communities, um, it's not a lot of new development. Um, Rob may have a little more new development than I do. He's a little further west, uh, but that certainly, my district has no, no real new development. It's a very, very working class community, and, you know, we we also deserve, my residents deserve, my community, my neighbors. To have, you know, to not have graffiti in every corner, to have their grass cut, uh, to not, to when it rains that. The that the water drains, like, we, the infrastructure, our roads, like, we deserve it as well. Uh, we were speaking offline, uh, Michael and I about the the change that that he's noticed in horse country. Uh, since, you know, since the last year or two, you know, it's just cleaner because we're, we we've built a larger team. We've pushed back on the county to spend more resources in our air, in our unincorporated areas. So you're right, you're right, Grant. It's, uh, it's something that, there's, there's very few, uh, commissioners, and it's not calling on my commissioners, just to your point. There's only two that are in a hundred percent unincorporated. We've gotta, we gotta defend those those folks.
Let's talk about Parks Department. There's a proposed cut of twenty five million dollars and also to.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. I don't wanna spend five dollars when I go into Tropical Park.
You're rich, Grant, why not? I'm just kidding. For the record, I'm totally against that.
What's a block that blows my mind is, you pull in. I've been going to Tropical Park for thirty years. I'm not me, but anybody who's been there. All of a sudden, they pull in, they don't see that little sign saying, you're gonna be charged parking.
Yeah, well, so that doesn't exist today, um, and I've I've pushed back. I've had several conversations with the mayor already. It's the first time I'm saying this publicly. I hope she doesn't kill me for for saying this, uh, but we have talked about this, and I think we're at a place where we're. We're trying to figure out how to, uh, replug that hole that we have in parks without having to charge our residents.
Get so much grieve over it, right?
What, it hasn't happened, so I I don't think the 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 grief has 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 really started. Uh, but I, before it starts, it's not something that I'm comfortable with. We're, we already pay those services in our property taxes. We should not have to also go and pay to go walk the park. It's just, it's just not, not something I'm comfortable with. So I've pushed back hard. Um, Tropical Park was one of the ones that they they they, uh, they had in their budget to 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 do it with. I said, absolutely not, it's not happening.
Barnes Park, the, that's named after the first county Parks Director. He he'd be rolling his grave that you're charging five dollars to see my park.
So that, look, I I can't speak for what the entire commission will do. I can't speak for the mayor, but I will say that I am. Um, unequivocally, uh, or entirely against, uh, charging at parks. And it's something that I'm going to definitely continue to fight hard for, but I think. The mayor has now seen eye to eye with me on that and is understanding of it, and we will find. A solution of how to plug that that hole rather than having to charge.
I might, I say that that Mayor Cobb is my mayor, our mayor, and I like her, all right? The bad publicity that's surrounding this, I don't remember the last time that happened, all right? So I I hope that you you guys and ladies come the fifteenth or so can work that out so that. After that, we can all go back to whatever we wanna do and and that, um, negatively impacts as few people as possible. What do you suppose?
I just read on Community Newspaper. I gotta bring it up. It was just posted.
Okay, tell me, Grant.
Just posted, that you agree about the governor coming down, not the governor, the over.
Absolutely. I even issued a a statement, a letter yesterday.
It's on, it's on our, if if we get our web, it's, you got it.
I didn't know that it was on Community Newspaper. Good stuff.
It's on our webpage right now. Team is on top of it.
Grant, here's, here's the thing, and 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 people don't, don't see this enough, and and I, and maybe I do a poor job of of communicating it is. Miami, the minute I was elected chair at the end of last year, I created two new committees. We started Dojing before Dojing was a thing, and and I'm not saying this to like be better than anyone. I'm just saying, we started Dojing. The end of last year, before even the president got sworn in 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 the White House is, I created for the first time an appropriations committee. And a government efficiency, uh, ad hoc committee.
You have a chairman for that, right?
Two chairmen. We have one that chairs appropriations and one that chairs government efficiency, and they work hand in hand. Uh, appropriation is chair, is Chair Regalado, and the government efficiency is J.C. Bermudez.
And how's he doing?
I hear he's, he's, he's doing, he's doing good.
Yeah, we got, we got blamed for it. We got blamed for it.
Blamed for what?
His little illness. We got blamed for it. The two days before, the day before, we had Pepe Diaz and J.C. Bermudez in the same room at a event together.
Oh, it's your fault, Grant.
We were the only ones in the world that didn't know.
It was you guys. This this explains it all. This explains.
Way to go, Miller. You got the thumb on that one. Way to go.
Wow, this explains so much. So so we we, uh, so I created this committee and 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 my colleagues, you know, serve, some of my colleagues serve on these committees. And their sole role is to identify inefficiencies and misuseage or misspending or overspending. Uh, of funds, and they've already identified several things, but my letter to the state, uh, to our CFO was saying, hey. We've been doing this already. We welcome you to come in and assist us. You'll be an extra tool in our toolbox. Yeah, we're not, we're not hiding anything. If you can find something that we have not been able to identify. I don't just, I'm not just okay with it, but I encourage it and I welcome it. And I said, not just that, not just what you asked the mayor for in her letter, in in your letter, is meet with us, ask us questions. Maybe we can provide insight that you're not seeing today, and combining our information, we can find some real solutions and some real. Fixes to our, to our issues that we have right now. So, but that said, I also let him know, I say, hey. By the way, we're not the redheaded stepchild here. Like, we've been doing this since last year. We're on it. We knew what was coming. And we've been cutting ourselves. We have been cutting ourselves in the mayor's proposed budget. While the commission, myself and other commissioners can debate her and disagree with where she cut from or not. She cut a lot of things that even affects her direct office and affect even some of her own priorities. When it comes to CBOs, et cetera, et cetera. So whether we agree how she proposed the budget or not. And there's some disagreements that I've expressed already to her, but was this a tough decision for her? It absolutely was, and is it going to be a tough decision for this commission when we take a final vote? It absolutely will be a tough decision.
I think we touched on it earlier, but there wasn't much conversation about the co- combining the library system with the cultural affairs. That's the other issue that I hear frequently. So what is, what is being proposed?
So like, I think we're in the middle of of, so what what she proposed was to merge cultural affairs with libraries. That that was what her proposal was, and that has an estimated savings of three, four million dollars. Don't quote me on that. I think that's about the number. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we're we're pinching pennies here. We we're we're trying to plug this four hundred plus million dollar deficit hole that we're in. So we're, we're trying to see where we could find, and that was one of the proposals that the mayor made. Excuse me, uh, you see, that's, you started talking about J.C. and Pepe and this stuff, and and then I started getting allergies. Uh, so she proposed that, there's arguments, especially from the culture arts, uh, side, I think, that they they don't want that. They want to be standalone. So I know that we're currently in conversations. To see what's the best outcome that can come out of that merger, uh, whether it it. Completes the merger, whether we keep it separate, whether we merge it, but try to find a separation within the same department. We are working out those kinks right now, and I I'm confident that by September, by the time we approve this budget. Uh, we'll, we'll have a a a solution that, and the other thing is, in this proposed budget, culture arts is is defunded. The grants are completely, no pun intended, right? Grants is, grants are being completely, uh, defunded, but. I'm also working, uh, hand in hand with the mayor to see how we can fix that as well, and and I'm sure we will find.
Was that a twelve million dollar cut?
It was a twelve million dollar cut. You've done your homework. The difference between a good journalist and not, you know.
The five state offices. The property appraiser, is he asking for extra money?
They they've all asked for their regular.
Regular amount.
The regular increase, right? We call it a seven percent, an eight, but whatever, whatever that percentage is for them. The, I I guess the the largest increase, and I I think we were gonna get there. But I think the largest increase is coming from our sheriff, um, and I've met with her, and she's, she's. Very much justified her increase. I don't think it's unreasonable. I, I, you know, it's it's for public safety, and I and I.
And that affects your district, Rob Gonzalez's district, more than anybody.
Absolutely, and the entire county.
Well, no, but people don't understand, you're in Cora Gable, see, I'm Cora Gable's cop first. If you need it, the county steps in.
Correct, but in unincorporated areas, it's all Miami-Dade County. It's the sheriff's office.
Correct.
Now, right? So her, her, her budget request by far is the largest, but it's justified. You know, she needs more academy so that she can bring in more police officers, which she needs. She, you know, her attrition level is is high, so she needs to fill those 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 roles.
Right now is around forty two hundred, uh, police officers.
Uniformed.
Uniformed police officers, plus this whole transition period of repainting the cars and the uniforms and and all that stuff. And so there's certainly some, lots of expenses that are that are relatively new. And the, uh, police officer's got a well-deserved raise last year, all right? God bless them because, you know, you got a problem, you know, you're not calling your neighbor.
We're calling nine one one.
Yes.
I say it all the time, whether it's fire, rescue, or police, we're calling nine one one when we have an emergency, and we've gotta protect those that protect us. Um, I I say this all the time, I can't, I can't say it enough, and and obviously to our military as well and and all of our veterans, but we. Public safety is our number one responsibility, in my opinion, as elected officials, and I think that's exactly what we will do. That said, and I and I said this to to our sheriff, uh, in 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 our meetings, I said, listen, uh, sheriff. Our deficit in our county budget is very real. It is very real. Um, so while I understand this is important, and we will make sure that this gets funded, because this is public safety. We do need to dissect it and do a deep dive to see if, you know, if there's administrative personnel in there. That we can maybe push another year. That doesn't have to be hired this year, right? Things like that, you know, not that affect the end user, not that affect our public safety, more on the administrative side. Uh, is the deeper dive that that we have to surgically look at.
By the way, she's very popular. We probably hosted her.
Three times.
At three, three.
I'm gonna get jealous here.
It it is, it is. People love her, all right? I don't know, I don't know exactly why, all right?
Here's what I'd say. Here's what I'd say, and maybe this is it, right? I remember, and and I'll, I'll make it about myself, which is something politicians do often, right? Is.
It's all about me, baby.
Yeah, it's all about politicians, right? I remember when I would, when I would canvas, when I would campaign in my earlier, uh, days. It was attractive to my community, to my voters, that I was not an attorney. That was, I thought it, at first I thought it was, you know, it was something that I would block myself, I said, maybe I should have been an attorney. No, it was attractive to my residents. I think.
You're like, you're a regular person.
I'm 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 just a neighbor. I'm one of them, and and I, I am, by the way, but, and so are, uh, some of my colleagues that are lawyers. They're, but in in my voters, you know, in my community, they welcomed that I was not another attorney. That I was just a regular neighbor. I think the same thing is happening with her, but a little bit different. She's not a politician. She is a police officer.
That's correct.
That now is in an elected role for the first time. As her.
Yes.
But she's still a police officer, and and I think that's why she's so popular.
Well, we 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 watch all three events we hosted with her. People are like, they don't care. They want a picture with it. They wanna put that picture on the wall. They wanna do all that stuff. Uh, here's a tough question.
Well, here we go, here we go.
We sup- we support it, so I'll make it clear. Six years ago, the county made a commitment for FIFA.
We talked about this, Grant.
Oh, you already did, never mind, okay.
No, we can, we can rehash it.
No, 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 I'm gonna say.
But that's, that was my response, funny enough, and I didn't know your position. I I'll be honest, I didn't know your position, but my 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 response, uh, to Michael and earlier was. That I I I have mixed feelings about it, because I understand we we've got a tough budget, so when you're looking at our budget deficit, and then you're looking at. Taxpayer dollars going to FIFA or to this, you know, this organization that's going to support FIFA. It 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 looks bad to the naked eye, but it looks bad. How much? We applied for this, we wanted this.
How much?
Not we, not myself, but the county did years back.
So the hotel association, the, all these entertainment, how much tax dollars or taxes are we going to get back from this? It's gotta be millions.
Oh, it's, it's, look, if we're putting in thirty, forty million dollars between in kinds and, and hard cash, uh, it, it's gonna be over, well over a hundred million dollars that we'll see in the return.
Right.
But.
But you don't see, you don't feel that.
You don't, you don't feel it, you can't touch it, you can't touch it today.
But every hotel, every restaurant, that area, you know, Miami Gardens, uh, we were a big supporter when they Formula One and the county commissioners.
We already talked about that, huh?
That Michael doesn't know, I'm gonna bring this up, it drives me crazy at the commission meetings, when a commissioner says, my district.
I know.
My district, not your district, it's our district.
It's our, it's our community, yeah.
Right, and they all do it, we all.
We all, we've all done it at one point or another, and it's funny because, um, oh, it wasn't too funny at the moment, but I think they all laughed it out afterwards, just there was a commissioner and I can't remember who was like, you know, my airport, because the airport's in their, in the district they represent. Which is really the way you say it, it's, it's the district I represent, it's not that it's my district, it's the district I represent at the time. Um, and they said, my airport, my, and, and I, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Gilbert or not, that says, on the microphone, on the end of this, said, hey, it's not your airport. Like, like I let it slide like two or three times, but let me tell you, it's not your airport, it is the county's airport.
It really came to heart when Keone Hardeman, they were talking about changing signs, the, uh, for, uh, singers and things like that. And people go, that's your district, that's, now I'm thinking, I'm commissioners, the other ones are saying that they're, I'm in that district more than anybody. So it's not his district, it's our district, everywhere.
It's our, look, it's our community. And if you want to go a step further, it's more than just Miami Dade County, it's a, it's a tri-county thing, because people that live in Broward may work in Dade County.
No, no, you're in Broward.
And we gotta look at transportation holistically too, and, and, and so it's, it's, it's more than just even Dade County, but yes, let's keep it to Dade County.
And dry rail, if we're not careful, we'll be out of business soon, if we don't give them money.
They're running out of deficit.
Yeah.
They're, and they serve a good purpose, but they're running out of deficit, is it sustainable, I, I, I don't know.
Well, our transportation's running a deficit.
Well, that, but that's, that's expected, just like parks, I mean, that's.
If, if people need to understand that.
But that's part of government, so there's, there's certain parts of governments, like for example, our permitting department, you know, what we call RER, that is a self-funded department, it produces enough money off of fees, the permit fees, et cetera, to sustain itself. So like taxpayer dollars don't go to the permitting department, we don't, we don't pay for that, uh, from our, from our tax.
Right.
From our taxes, we pay for it, we're, we're gonna go apply for a permit. But there's certain departments, certain services that we do operate at, at a loss, and, and, and transportation is one of them. Uh, public transportation and another one is, is parks. And, and, and that's okay, it's, it's government doing its job, right? Um, it, it doesn't need to be a profitable department, but we do need to understand that, because it was hard for me to understand that when I first got elected. You know, it was, it's a hard pill to swallow, like why are we running at such a deficit? And it's just, it's the way it is, those, those departments, you know, we don't charge enough fares, uh, and we want to keep it low, we don't, we don't want to increase.
Do other major cities have the same problems?
Absolutely, this is, this is absolutely.
People, people might not know that.
Yeah, absolutely, the transportation and, and parks.
What is it, Michael's getting tired, is it?
I'm giving him the hook.
Uh, Michael, is this time for our betters, is this lunchtime or something?
Yeah, right? Is there, is there, is there a hot dog there that you?
Yes, a hot dog named after him.
What's, what's your favorite hot dog?
The Grant Miller dog.
The Grant Miller dog.
Yeah, there are three months, last year there was a hot dog named after you.
There was.
The chairman dog.
You were there, the chairman dog.
Is that right?
Yeah, for three months, yeah, the chairman dog.
I've had people go and eat it, they've, they've called me from there, they've taken pictures.
Where are you, Dave Arbetter, come on, it's time to, to, time to feed us all.
Dave the man, I love Dave.
It's great, you're gonna take us out.
Hey, it's an honor, listen, you were a state rep for how many years?
Four years, four years in the state legislature as a state rep, and then now two and a half years so far on the county commission. And, uh, and I, and I love what I'm doing, I'm enjoying it, I think we're doing a good job, uh, I think term limits has helped.
Oh, it's changed everything.
It's changed everything, there's, there's a sense of urgency to, to make things happen now. And, and I say, I, I say that all the time, but I'm excited to be home, I'm excited that I get to go home at the end of the night, not in Tallahassee where I would be away for, for months at a time. Um, and I'll say it here.
You can make a difference now, as a county commissioner.
It's more tangible, for sure, we could definitely see the change. Uh, but, but Michael and, and Grant, I know that you were doing this to, to, which you were just, you don't even have a watch on, so I don't know what you were doing.
He's the guy with the money.
I have, I have no jury, Mike, I'm loving.
Yeah, great, the day that I put a watch on, now you say that, so, but, but, but I do want to say, uh, in the spirit of saying that I'm having a great time, I'm enjoying it, I love what I do. Um, although there's, there's, there's days that I, I question, I think every commissioner, every elected official does, I, there's days I question. Uh, but nonetheless, overall, I, I love helping people, uh, but I want to call out, uh, my colleagues that got jealous, uh, when they see this, but I will say that District ten, my team, is the A team, the best team in Miami Dade County government. So my entire team, uh, my district office and at office of the chair, uh, is, is unmatched, and I say that proudly because without them, uh, forget what, you know, without them, forget about me, it's, without them, our district, our community will not be well-served. So I, I trust that with or without me, so long as that team is in place, uh, that community will be well-served.
And if people want to walk into your office, it's on one hundred and seventeenth Avenue and, uh, seventy, and Sunset Drive.
Sunset Drive, next to the, the Skechers, uh, shoe store there.
And when you walk in, they're right, the reception is right there.
Yeah, and, 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 and before we wrap up, just one thing, and I, and I hate to do this, but Michael, you're my constituent, I represent you as your commissioner, how do you feel?
I'm delighted, I am delighted.
No, no, don't say that because I'm here.
No, because I drive those streets. I, I drive down the streets of horse country, they're clean, one hundred and nineteenth Avenue is, is finally significantly better. Uh, all the Santeria is gone, alright? Uh, the things that I think most of us look at is how does the neighborhood look? The piles of garbage don't, they're not like they used to be, they'd sit out there for a week now, uh, Solid Waste picks it up within a couple of days, alright? I think, uh, just being more transparent and, and letting people know that you are there. Whether they call you or not, I think that is important.
Absolutely, I agree.
Years ago I went to the doctor, he goes, what's wrong, I go, I don't know, you know, as soon as he put his hand on my shoulder, I said, I already feel better. I just wanted to like, come here and pause for a moment.
I can't help it.
I know.
I can't help it.
Alright.
Alright, well, I'm glad I'm serving you well, my team is serving you well, so anything, anything.
Put your hand on his shoulder, it's good.
And I do want to thank Aldo, who's been working the area for, I don't know, fifteen years, I think.
So he's the one, he's the only, he's here with us today.
Twenty-five, twenty-five years.
Yeah, he's, he's with us, that's why, uh, Michael is pointing to, to the back of the cameras, but, uh, Aldo's actually the only one on my team that served this community with, under Soto, under Senator Soto.
That's where he learned everything, get that shopping cart, make sure.
Yeah, and, and, and he laughs about it, and actually I've, I've, I've had some good quality time with him and his wife together, and his wife laughs about it as well, and, and tells me, she says, you, you're, you're a younger version of Soto in so many ways. And, and I think he gets a kick out of it, um, yeah, a little more modern maybe, but, but overall, it's, I have the same kind of peeves, like it's, it's the shopping carts, it's the potholes. Uh, it's the grass, it's, it's the community, it's the things that, that we live, that we want to live clean, we want to, the graffiti. You know, like, you're gonna see that there's much less graffiti in our district, I'm very proud of that. Uh, we've got someone full-time in addition to the county staff, we've got someone full-time on the District ten team that drives around in our pickup truck and the minute they see graffiti or I, we report it, they go and they paint over it, they wash it off. You know, we, we do things because we care, and, and they, and Aldo and, 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 and the, the old Senator Soto team laughs about it because, uh, I'm so, I'm so like him in, in many ways.
But, but that strip from Miller to probably fifty-first street or fifty, uh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, fifty-first, just the grass being there and don't park on the grass, what a difference it's made, now I drive down the street, I go, this is good.
You're not, you're not seeing eighteen-wheelers ruining the grass there and junk and sofas and, and mattresses being thrown out.
And if people see stuff on the side of the street, they, they call three one one or go to MiamiDade.gov slash Solid Waste or whatever it is and report it, very good. And if you see people dumping stuff on the side of the road, I've got, learned my lesson, do not stop, do not, alright? Take a picture of the license plate, turn them, turn them in.
That's, that's what we recommend, you know, we're, we're a good team, the A team, but we need the community's help to let us know what they see.
Chairman.
Michael.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller.
Grant.
Okay, and we have, we have four people behind the scenes there, let, let's put the camera on them then one more time, alright?
Let's see if she can do it, we just got this.
Let's see if we can get this going here.
We got Jillian, my comms, uh, director here who's shaking her head no.
Where are we?
She's saying, I am not ready to be on camera, what is going on?
Just one second.
Okay, while we're doing that, by the way, Michael, how?
Oh, here we go, okay, there we go, alright, there we go.
There we go, baby.
There they go, that's Aldo.
Okay.
That's Jillian, part of my A team right there.
Aldo, I've never seen him without a suit on, so it's a little odd, odd for him.
Right?
Okay.
You only see him sitting behind me there at change.